It says on the program that Pastor George Gany of Smyrna Presbyterian Church, 3130 Atlanta Road is going to be here, but he's not. We have his replacement. I'm going to ask you to come forward. You told me what your name was, but...
Jason Davis.
Jason Davis. So would everyone please rise? And we also listen in the place of the flag. You can speak right from the podium. You're good. Everyone, please rise.
Let's pray, everyone. Heavenly Father and gracious God, holy, holy, holy are you, Lord God Almighty. We do thank you for this meeting tonight, and we thank you for the freedoms and the liberties that we enjoy in the USA, many of which we often take for granted, but we do thank you and praise you for them. Father, we do thank you for the city of Smyrna, and we thank you for the leaders that you have erected to do your bidding here in this community. You say in your word in Romans 13 that "the authorities that exist, exist because you have placed them in their positions, and no authority exists except what you have ordained." And so we thank you and praise you for Mayor Bacon and for the City Council, and for all those leaders here in this community that you have put in place, Lord, so that Smyrna might flourish and do your bidding. We do pray for an endowment of wisdom for the council tonight as they do your work, that Smyrna might continue to prosper, Lord. And we pray all these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Let us say the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those folks that are looking for a church or want to change, I'm sure the folks at Smyrna Presbyterian at 3130 Atlanta Road would be more than happy to have you. And I understand Pastor Gany had tore something, so I hope he gets well. Agenda changes, we have a couple of three. Item 4B, approval of a final plat to split the subject property at 3137-13 King Springs Road. That's been withdrawn. Item D, rezoning requests for property at 1026 Concord Road. That's been withdrawn per the applicant. And 6A, under formal business, approval of ordinance suspending all sections, mandating use of electronic records of Article 3, Chapter 22, Palm Brokers City of Smyrna Code of Ordinance continuation of suspension until August the 19th, 2013. Those are the, I think those are the only changes that we have. Under the mayor's report, I'm going to ask Jennifer Bennett to come forward and give us a quick announcement about Food Truck Tuesdays, which will start tomorrow. And then we've got a couple of proclamations we're going to read out and recognize some folks.
That's right. It's back for 21 weeks. Tomorrow night from 5:00 to 9:00 at Taylor Bronner Park. We have some food trucks lined up. We have Freckled in Blue, Happy Belly, Black Sican, Buena Provecho, Ibiza Bites, Mixed Up, Pressed for Time, Hail Caesar, Yum Yum Cupcakes, King of Pops, and the band playing is Sojourner. They're bluegrass. It should be a really good time. If you're a food truck interested in participating, we are on a waiting list right now, which is a good thing, but it means please don't show up at the office. Send us an email at foodtrucktuesdays@smyrna.gov. We'll send you an application and put you on the waiting list, and we hope everybody will join us tomorrow.
And actually, we have reduced the length of the food trucks to 21 weeks versus the 30, I think.
That originally started, yeah.
Good deal. Look forward to everybody coming, so.
Great.
It'll be a good time.
Thank you.
Item B is proclamation recognition of National Prevention Week, May 12 through the 18th, 2013, and underage drinking prevention day, May the 14th, 2013. I think we've got some folks that are here to accept that proclamation. If you want to step forward, Mr. Ron Fennell will come down. While he's coming down, I do want to make a note that Ms. Pritchett is out. She's, I think she's having some surgery tomorrow. We wish her well. Hope she's, her recovery's going to be fast.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am joined today by Laura Cersey from the Cobb Alcohol Task Force and Dick Cottrell, who is with Hope Recovery Homes, and appreciate their involvement and their urging of this resolution. It's been my privilege for the last 15 years, I guess now, to be involved with an anti-drinking and driving group called Team Georgia, and the last four years as the chairman statewide. And when we have local groups like this working diligently at the local level, it makes a huge difference. So the city of Smyrna is willing to today adopt a proclamation that reads "By order of the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of National Prevention Week and Underage Drinking Prevention Day, whereas behavioral health issues and substance abuse and mental health are prevailing concerns to residents in local communities as well as nationally; and whereas research shows that education and outreach are key in helping youth and the general public understand the risks and costs of behavioral health issues, particularly substance and mental health; whereas the WE CAN program targets parents and caregivers as the primary group for influencing youth and focuses on three important behaviors: improved food choices, increased physical activity, and reduced screen time; and whereas the Cobb Alcohol Task Force is mobilizing residents to reduce underage and youth binge drinking because alcohol is involved in youth injury from accident, addiction, assault, burns, drowning, and sexually transmitted disease, and to youth death from car crash, murder, and suicide; whereas the Cobb 2020 partnership has assessed the current health status of Cobb County and is developing a health improvement plan that will help create significant changes in building a healthier community; and whereas there is a continuing need to make residents in Cobb County more aware of the roles they can play in the success of prevention strategies, particularly toward reducing substance abuse and promoting mental health in youth; and whereas the national theme for 2013, in 2013, for recognizing the role that prevention plays in enhancing behavioral health and well-being is "Your voice, your choice, make a difference." Now therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the City of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim May 12th to 18th, 2013, as National Prevention Week, and May 14th as Underage Drinking Prevention Day, to help raise community awareness and to encourage residents to join with the aforementioned community organizations in promoting prevention as an effective overall strategy to reduce substance abuse and to promote mental health in Cobb County with particular attention and care for our youth, one of the county's most valuable resources. The sixth day of May, 2013. A. Max Bacon, Mayor. Laura?
Former school board member and her better half, and soon to be Smyrna residents.
Amen.
You going to say something quickly?
And just want to thank the council. You all have been good partners for many years, and we know that youth alcohol use is an adult problem with youth consequences because youth can't abuse alcohol unless they have access to alcohol, and that access is through adults. So everything that you do to help to change the altogether too common perception of low harm from providing to youth and to help educate the public on how we can best protect our most precious resources, very much appreciated. Thank you very much.
And thank y'all for, y'all have really worked hard getting to Smyrna. This has been going on for how long?
A long time.
A long time. But they're going to be residents. Can I tell people?
Yeah, sure.
Grand stride.
Moving in in the next 60 days.
Excellent.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
We also have a proclamation tonight in recognition of Norton Park Elementary School celebrating 50 years. I know Doug Dalton is here, along with some school board folks. If y'all want to come forward, Susan Wilkinson, who is the closest, that's her district, as close as you can get, she's going to read the proclamation. We are awful glad to have you. Doug, you want to introduce who you've got here? We just had the mayor's education award tonight, and of course Norton Park had three folks, and we're glad that y'all have always been involved in this program, and we're happy to see y'all make 50 years.
Well, thank you. We're proud to be part of the city of Smyrna. And this is my assistant principal, Jeff Mosley.
Welcome, Susan. Nice to meet you. Hi. In recognition of 50 years Norton Park Elementary School, and I knew I have to get these glasses on. Okay. Whereas in 1962, with the support of Cobb County Board of Education, an important milestone was achieved in the efforts to educate the students of Smyrna, Georgia. With an instructional staff of 10 teachers to serve 301 students, Norton Park Elementary opened its doors to the community. And whereas students began thriving immediately, the community began seeing an increase in the number of families living within Norton Park's attendance zone over several years. In 1970, the Cobb County Board of Education approved an addition of six classrooms, along with an expansion to Norton Park's library. And whereas from 1996 through 2006, Norton Park experienced another spike in the number of students attending the school. In those years, 18 additional classrooms were added to meet the demands of a growing community. And whereas in 2008, and for five consecutive years, Norton Park received recognition for being a Title I school of distinction. And whereas today Norton Park houses over 780 students in a diverse, supportive community that work hand in hand with each other to see that the students of Cobb County and Smyrna, Georgia, receive a rigorous and relevant education that prepares them for the demands of life. And whereas over 25,000 students have passed through Norton Park Elementary School, it is clear that Norton Park Elementary School has been a mainstay for the students and community of Smyrna for several years, and has been encouraging, developing, and challenging young minds all along the way. Now therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the City of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim May 6, 2013, as a day of recognition for Norton Park Elementary School, and encourage all city residents, officials, and staff to congratulate their entire staff on their many accomplishments and contributions to the community.
Congratulations, Doug. Thank y'all very much.
I'll see y'all again. Thanks. Bye.
That's really, if you don't know where Norton Park is, you go down Church Road and hang a riot. It's sort of tucked back in the neighborhoods down there. It's a great school. Thank y'all for all y'all've done. Item 4 is land issues, zoning, and annexations. Item A, approval of ordinance 2013-06, annexation request, 100% of owners requesting annexation, landlot 632, 0.30 acre, parcel number 17063200320, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, 2761 Matthew Street. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, this annexation is pretty straightforward. It's actually using the 100% method, as authorized by the state when handling annexations. And the owners at 2761 Matthew Street have indicated they would like to come into the city limits. We have followed all of our legal procedures on this, and a notice of non-objection has been received from Cobb County. And therefore, we do recommend approval of this annexation with an effective date of June 1st, I believe it would be.
Listen, Ms. Terry Nulwich's in. Ms. Nulwich.
Yes, we were delighted to receive this annexation request, and I would like to, well, I look forward to in about a minute welcoming the Lumsdons into Ward 3 officially. They've always been a part of Ward 3, of course, but now they'll officially be a part of Ward 3. So at this point, I would like to move to approve item A, which is, it's item 2013-134, approval of ordinance 2013-06. It is the annexation request. 100% of owners are requesting annexation, landlot 632. It's 0.30 of an acre, three tenths of an acre. It's parcel number 17063200320, 17th District, 2nd Section of Cobb County, 2761 Matthew Street. And I believe they'll be official Ward 3 residents as of June 1st, 2013.
Have a motion by Ms. Nulwich, seconded by Ms. Bluestein. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Thank you very much. As I mentioned earlier, item 4B, oh, I'm sorry, 4B, has been withdrawn. Do we need to take any action on that, Mr. Cochran? Okay. Mr. Lenika, if you want to make that motion.
Your honor, on agenda item 2013-169, I move to allow the applicant to withdraw their request to split the parcel at 3713 King Springs Road without prejudice.
Second.
Motion's second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 6-0. Thank you very much. Item 4C, V13-013, public hearing variance request. V13-013, appeal, the decision of the license and variance board to allow accessory structure in front of, in front yard, 5.36 acres, landlot 346, 2500 South Cobb Drive, Cobb Ice Houses Inc. Is the applicant here? Okay. If you'll please step forward. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, at the meeting of the license and variance board of March 27th, 2013, the license and variance board heard a request from the applicant who wants to place an automated ice fending machine in the parking lot at 2500 South Cobb Drive. This ice fending machine will have an automated pay station located in the front yard of the property, and per Section 501.2 of the zoning ordinance, all accessory structures are required to be located in the rear yard. Staff does not believe that any hardship exists and that approval would set a negative precedent. And so therefore, community development recommends upholding the license and variance board decision to deny this request.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this variance request? This is Ms. Wilkinson's district. Ken, are you going to make a report?
It'll be fairly quick. All the information, I believe, is already out there, but license and variance board did send a unanimous denial. That's why it is being appealed. Up on the screen is the larger parcel that the site will be located on. It is off of South Cobb Drive. It is in front of the Outdoor Adventure Store. This is the site plan. What's outlined in red is the proposed location of the Ice House. This is the elevation of the proposed accessory structure. And just pictures of the site and adjacent uses. And again, as already been stated, Mr. Taylor, staff is recommending that you uphold the license and variance board recommendation. We do believe it will set a negative precedent based on the way the ordinance is currently written. That's all I have.
I would assume, if you'll, thank you. Any questions, Ken? Because I want to hear from the applicant. I want to get him sworn in, I think, Susan. If you'll step up and tell us who you are, and then Scott, does he need to be sworn in?
Okay.
Tell us who you are.
Hello, my name is Bo Wilson.
Hello, Mr. Wilson. Thank you for coming tonight, and we have been discussing this application for the Ice House in the parking lot, and based on the community development feedback and their decision, they recommended denial based on, they didn't feel that a hardship was created. So tonight, I am going to recommend denial, but we have been discussing that. I've been discussing it with staff, and the council has also been discussing the possibility of making an ordinance that would allow for some accessory uses in the parking lots of commercial property. And that, some of the things that we've, what I want to continue to discuss are some conditions that might go along with that ordinance, such as the types of building materials that would be allowed, or any landscaping requirements, any proper lighting that might be needed around this accessory structure, and also maybe the size of the property where it would be allowed. For example, a large shopping center where there's lots of parking, there may be room for the structure, but another property such as a bank, there might not be room for an accessory structure. So right now, by allowing that, we would set a precedence. And then also, a couple of other things are, to also make sure that it's in compliance with the overlay districts and also our sign requirements. So our plans are to continue looking at that and making ordinance for this type of a structure.
Sure. I understand.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah. If you'll tell us who you are, and I guess you're with Cobb Ice House? Is that the name of it?
Well, it's just a company I started to, I don't have any of these ice machines going yet. That was just a corporation that I would place them in. So yes, I'm with Cobb Ice Houses, though there really are no Cobb Ice Houses yet. But it's just, I don't know if you want me to describe what I was doing or just stop it there.
Yeah, I mean...
These are, as they showed on the elevation, it's a self-contained Ice House. These are popular in, all in Florida and South Georgia. Ideally, the best place would be to put one near Marina or something where we'd have a lot of, you know, a need for ice, or an obvious use of ice. But there's a lot of people that buy ice that you and I may not, but nonetheless. So that's what it looks like. It's self-contained, it's 22 feet long, eight feet wide. My example there has a canopy around the top that conceals the compressor and whatnot, which is somewhat unsightly, but that kind of dresses it up around the top. It's self-contained. A lot of the business would be done early in the morning by contractors stopping on the way to work to get ice. There's a million odd uses for ice that most people just don't...
I've seen a couple of them up in North Georgia.
Right. There are some.
Right.
Typically, the cost of rent here in town, in the city, is a bit prohibitive, but...
Was there any reason why you picked that South Cobb Drive in front of Adventure?
It's mostly due to high traffic count and high visibility.
It really has nothing to do with so much adventure outdoors?
Oh, no. Sure, it could be next door, you know, a block away. Just of high traffic and visibility.
I mean, I've used them before. I mean, they are a good, it's a good bargain. You come up, pull your cooler there, and put two bucks in, and get quite a bit of ice for two bucks. So it's not a, I've never used them in Florida.
They do serve a niche need.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Bo Wilson?
Mr. Wilson, I mean, and I think the biggest objection that the council had was simply the looks of the building itself, and, you know, Susan brought up some other issues. Is that something that you would be minimal to working with someone?
Oh, sure. And I understand, but it's not, it doesn't fit, you know, everybody's idea of an attractive building. So with the franchisor, franchisor, I would just buy the machine and operate it from the parent company. I'm sure we could, you know, adjust the fascia or whatnot to a suitable method.
And I like the concept. It's just something brand new for us that I think sort of concerns us a little bit.
I understand.
Could I ask a question? See, I've never seen one of these except at the beach.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, has there been a study done that you guys are going to sell that much ice?
Well, of course, you know...
On South Cobb or anywhere?
Well, some of my friends and I have talked to other franchisees in like Dallas, Texas, and whatnot. So obviously, you want high population, you know, dense population and high traffic count. So those are some things that we were banking on to make us a success. And of course, it really doesn't require a full-time employee, so the overhead is minimal too, which is something that is appealing to all business owners.
I mean, I like the concept, but just trying to figure out where the best place to put them at.
Sure. I understand.
Ms., go ahead.
I have a question. In other Ice Houses that are like this, how do they, how do you do the water? Is it usually a separate?
Oh, they'd be separately metered, water and electricity. And then, of course, I think the best way would be to put water and electricity underground just for the aesthetics and, mostly aesthetics, but that's how we would do it.
Yeah, Mr. Wilson, just following up on that. My concern was water, electricity, but also the fact that our zoning doesn't allow for such an out parcel use at the moment.
Right.
So we're going to have to visit how that might work. Now, should you obtain permission to do one at some point, I'm assuming this is a business model that you want to replicate.
Yes, sir.
Throughout the city, throughout the county?
Well, of course, I'd want to start with one and see how it went.
Yeah.
But if it worked well, of course, I wouldn't want to put them on top of each other. You know, they'd want to be spread out, I'd say, three, three miles minimum from each other, so, you know, they wouldn't be inundating an area. But that's a direction I'd like to work in, if we were able to work something out.
Okay.
And I'm not saying I'd put one every three miles if it were a slam dunk, but...
Well, we've never permitted one, so this is new territory for us. So we want to anticipate what it means if we change what we have in our ordinances now.
Right.
Because it wouldn't just apply for your business, but other similar businesses and out parcels that would then be permitted uses, as it were.
I understand.
Okay.
You're not going to start crying or anything, are you?
I'm prepared for defeat, Gus. I hate it.
Any other questions, Mr. Wilson?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion for denial of the accessory structure. It's 4C, V13-013, for the variance request, appeal to the decision of the license and variance board to allow accessory structure in front yard at the 5.36 acres, landlot 346-2500, South Cobb Drive, for Cobb Ice House, Inc.
We have a motion, and we're second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's denied, 6-0. What I'd like to ask is, would you be willing to work with our staff as they get ready to put together an ordinance that does cover Ice Houses? Would you?
I'd be glad to, and I may, or I can access some other information in other municipalities that do have an ordinance for this, if that would be helpful.
And I'll tell you, there was an issue about where you're going to get the water from, and of course, obviously, you can't run a hose through, up to the parking lot, but there was, something came up about maybe closest point to get water was to bore under South Cobb Drive, so I don't, that was a concern too.
That would be an expense, but one I would be willing to bear.
Good deal. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
On a second note, I'd like to add that I respect and appreciate y'all opening the meeting with prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah.
I didn't know they did that in America anymore, but that was quite refreshing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, as I mentioned earlier, that's the rezoning request, is Z13, for 1026 Concord Road. Mr. Wilson, if you want to make a motion that we accept the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice, is that correct, Scott?
No, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that item Z13-003 be withdrawn without prejudice. Rezoning request, Z13-003, rezoning for limited commercial to general commercial, 0.5 acre tract, landlot 452 at 1026 Concord Road, owned by Mr. Derwood Pierce.
Second.
This time, I'd like to make that in form of a motion.
I've got a motion second. Before we vote, was there anybody here for that issue? I got a motion second. Before we vote, was there anybody here for that issue? Just to make sure. Okay, let's make sure there is none. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 6-0. Item, item five is previous licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, this item will be continued, continuation of suspension to August 19th. Mr. Taylor, we just read, well, this approval of ordinance 2013 suspending all sections mandating use of electronic records of Article III, Chapter 22, Palm Brokers City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, continuation of suspension to August the 19th. I'll ask Mr. Fennel if he'll make that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we continue the suspension to August 19th, 2013 of item 213 dash 172, the approval of the ordinance 2013 dash 07 suspending all sections mandating use of electronic records in Article III, Chapter 22, Palm Brokers City of Smyrna Ordinances.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 6-0. Item 6B, appointment of Margaret Maggie Carr Shannon to the City of Smyrna Tree Board for the term ending August 2016. Mr. Wade Lenica.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've had a vacancy for Ward Six on the Smyrna Tree Board for a number of months. Argyle Estates residents, Maggie Shannon, who's got a background in design and urban development and is interested in trees and the tree canopy of Smyrna and is excited about joining that board. She attended the April meeting just to sit in and see what they did and said, yes, she'd like to be appointed officially to the board. So she'll be filling a term that's already in progress and which expires in August 2016. Those are four-year terms. So at this time, I'm going to move to appoint Margaret Carr Shannon to the Smyrna Tree Board representing Ward Six for the term ending August 2016.
Second.
Our motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Got one more. That's approved, 6-0. Okay. Item 6C, under formal business, authorized resolution and declaration of taking acquiring 819 square feet of permanent drainage easement and 5,104 square feet of temporary drainage easement at 4015 Green Forest Parkway, Reed Road Drainage Improvements. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, the 2011 Spallos Project List included the replacement of a road culvert on Reed Road. The project requires temporary and permanent drainage easements at 4015 Green Forest Parkway in order to move forward. The city's been attempting to negotiate with the property owner, but the two parties are still too far apart. So to get this project moving, we are asking for a resolution and declaration of taking of 819 square feet for a permanent easement and 5,104 square feet for a temporary easement. Staff does recommend approval.
This is under Mr. Corky Welch's, Chairmanship of Public Works. Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke with Scott Stokes this afternoon. I think he's spoken with our, our city attorney. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to author, make a motion to approve the resolution, to authorize a resolution and declaration of taking acquiring 819 square feet of permanent drainage easement and 5,104 square feet of temporary drainage easement at 4015 Green Forest Parkway, Reed Road Drainage Improvements. As Mr. Taylor mentioned, this is basically a repair to a culvert that is in much need of repair and we need to continue on with the project. Make that in form of a motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Mr. Cochran, Mr. Taylor, have we exhausted all efforts to bring this back? Scott?
Yeah, I think we have. We're just, too, an issue of, of what it's worth. And we've got an appraisal and the city's offered to pay the appraised amount.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 6-0. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, item A is an approval of the April 15th, 2013 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is an approval of a name change request from Avila Apartments to Powder Springs Street Apartments in accordance with Section 50 dash 30 of the City of Smyrna Fire Prevention Code. Item C is an approval of a name change request from the Gardens of Magnolia Trails to Serenity, a new assisted living in accordance with Section 50 dash 30 of the Smyrna, City of Smyrna Fire Prevention Code. Item D is the award RFP 13 dash 023 to the low bidder for annual audit services to Chris Galvis McGrath in an amount of $28,000 per year for three years and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. And item E is the approval of the property liability insurance renewal with Georgia and our local risk management agency and authorize the mayor to sign any related documents.
Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 6-0. Committee reports will start tonight with, with Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
I knew he was going to do that. Well, I don't know how to say this. Today, I sent out my first news, I won't call it a letter, but I sent out my first news something. So if, if you are in Ward Two and you'd like to receive periodic updates from me, if you will go to smyrna ward two, the number two, dot com and sign up, there's a place on there to sign up for the newsletter, I would be more than happy for you to be on the list. And I'm not going to send it out every week or whatever, but I would like to send it out periodically so that I can keep the homeowners as informed as they would like to be. So that's it. And that, with that, I yield, Your Honor.
Ms. Terry Nolowicz.
Thank you, Your Honor. It will shock no one to hear that I'm very excited that I can feed my family at Food Truck Tuesdays tomorrow evening. We will probably start off, I don't know, the kids are having a debate. We may be doing two or three different trucks. We'll be finishing at King of Pops and then we'll be going home and hosing them off and putting them to bed. I'm looking forward to it very, very much. If you're looking for Ward Three updates, you can send me an email, tannulwicz, T-A-N-U-L-E-W-I-C-Z, at smyrna ga dot gov. You can also always look at my Facebook page, which is public. You don't have to be on Facebook to look at it. And that's updated every day or so. And that is facebook dot com slash Terry, T-E-R-R-I, Ward Three. And that's the number three. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also excited that we're having Food Truck Tuesdays coming back tomorrow night. I encourage everybody to come out and enjoy some good food. Hope to see you there. Also, with the newsletter issue, I feel like I'm almost to the point where I've got enough email address just to send something out at this point. But if, if you would like to be included in a newsletter, please send me an email so that I can get your email in, in my record and I'll be able to send something out. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to remind the citizens to, that we, on our website, on the city's website, there is a, a survey for the new Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And we're encouraging all our citizens to go to the website and fill out the questionnaire. It'll be very helpful in planning the, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for the next 10 years. Then also, I'd like to mention that I heard that the Arthur Bacon Golf Tournament was canceled this past weekend. And that has been rescheduled for August the 3rd and 4th to coincide with the Smyrna's downtown birthday celebration. And then also, I'd like to congratulate Rebecca Power. Today was her first day as the new children's librarian. And if you'd like to go by there and introduce yourself and say hello to her, I'm sure that she would appreciate that. So, and with that, I yield.
Thanks very much. Mr. Wade Lenica.
Thank you, Your Honor. Want to thank the folks in Vinings Glen for letting me speak at their annual HOA meeting yesterday. It's good to see old friends and update them on city activities. We had a public meeting about a month ago to talk about the Atlanta Road median. And based on the public input, in that meeting, there were a number of changes made. For example, and I don't think I've even had a chance to tell the council this, but one of the changes, based on the input and thinking about what we're doing and new city engineer being on board is, in the plans that we presented a month ago, it showed a landscape median in front of Taylor Bronner Park. But based on Food Truck Tuesdays and high demand for parking and stacking and turning movements, that has now been eliminated to try to provide better safer access to the park on those days. Other changes were made to the plans. We're in the midst of reworking the plans based on the input that we got. I don't even have a list of all the changes. There's six or eight of them that the engineers told me about. We're trying to define better the landscaping that would be in the median stretches. And I've asked for more detail on that. Based on my request to have that information available to show the citizens again, we had hoped to have the follow-up meeting this month in May. However, it's going to be June 5th, Wednesday, June 5th at Bronner Hall. I'm not sure if we're going to start at 6:30 or 7:00 as I speak tonight, but it'll be a town hall kind of thing. And, and I mean that in the sense of it'll be not a formal presentation. We did that at the last meeting. But we'll have multiple sets of the drawings available at different points in the room with staff and consultants available where citizens can come up, see the maps up close, ask questions, make comments, and, you know, hopefully not take quite as long as the couple hours that we spent in the last meeting. So that's the plans. I wanted to get that out. We'll send out something as we get closer to the date. But Wednesday, June 5th, that evening, 6:30 or 7:00 at Bronner Hall, we'll have the next round of meetings, singular, I guess, next meeting round on the Atlanta Road Median Project. Finally, I just want to remind everybody about Memorial Day coming up on Monday, May 27th. Ceremony starts promptly at 9:30 at Veterans Memorial Park here next door to City Hall, the corner of King Street and Bank Street. We've got some great speakers lined up. Our keynote speaker is Ranger Sergeant First Class Michael Schlitz, wounded warriors in the process of moving from San Antonio, Texas and Brooke Army Medical Center, where he spent a number of years, to Columbus, Georgia. Sergeant Schlitz was blown out of a Humvee in Iraq, lost both arms, 85% third-degree burns. He is a testament to the medical technology and efforts of the medical personnel and the soldiers he was with to be alive today. And he's still on active duty, helping other wounded warriors transition back either to service or civilian life. A remarkable, remarkable individual and a speaker that I know you're going to want to hear and not miss. Our, our other speaker is a female chaplain based at Dobbin's Air Reserve Base. She's originally from the Ukraine, immigrated to the United States, joined the military and has served for a number of years. She has kind of a different perspective on what it means to be a member of the Armed Forces of the United States. And it'll be a military ceremony as always, lasts about an hour. Smyrna Veterans Committee chaired by Ken Burke is working hard on getting the event ready to go. It'll be first-class, top-notch. I invite and encourage everyone to come. If you've got children, bring your family. Besides getting to meet the veterans and hear the stories, which is important, there'll also be a number of static displays of military equipment setup, military vehicles, and if we can make it happen, a military helicopter. With that, Your Honor, I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, I'd like for each of us to take the time to thank our public safety personnel who protect us every day and are always on guard 24/7/365. Our police department has been doing a remarkable job lately under the leadership of our new chief, David Lee. Let me just tell you a couple of things. First of all, they've been making some DUI arrests. They've been making ancillary other arrests on the weekend stops. These guys are doing a remarkable job to let people know out there that Smyrna Police is on the job, that we're taking some of these dangerous drivers off the roads. And we appreciate the work they're doing. In short order, they've changed our statistical curve on some of these types of arrests, and I appreciate it. Chief Lee has also been making his way throughout the community. If you want to hear directly from the police chief, do as I have done, invite him to the various civic groups that you belong to. He's willing to get out there, talk to your HOA, talk to any of the civic groups, any of the community groups. He is a community-oriented police officer. He wears the uniform and he's with the officers every day. He's instituted some command staff programming changes that are going to bear fruit for us for many years to come, and we appreciate that. Gun safety class, he'll institute the first one of those coming up. He started the first Smyrna Police Citizens Academy. So you'll, the first class has been filled, but you'll hear more about that. Opportunities for Smyrna citizens to kind of get under the hood and see what is the Smyrna Police Department from all aspects. The fire department, last week, I had the privilege of attending the organizational meeting of the Citizens Corps Council. It's an organizational meeting centered around emergency preparedness. It's a dozen people who will then begin the process of helping to recruit and involve many of you in the community, your HOAs, your citizen groups, your community involvement is going to be important to the success of this. And this is to prepare our community for those emergency situations that may occur. And in light of the Boston situation of late, every citizen needs to be engaged in the defense of this country. And we want to provide the tools necessary, the education necessary to help you should an unfortunate eventuality, whether it's a natural disaster or a man-made disaster befalls us anywhere in Smyrna, that we're adequately prepared and you as citizens are educated as to what role you can play. And finally, as others have mentioned, if you would like to get information in my newsletter, I've, I publish one per quarter. I did a little bit more often last year, but we've stepped back to one a quarter. I just sent out the last issue about three weeks ago, but I'll be happy to plug you into that. You can contact me through the Smyrna website or you can send it to my personal email, ronfennel@me.com. Ron Fennel, one word, F-E-N-N-E-L, at me dot com. And I'll be happy to put you on the mailing list so you can get it electronically. With that, Mr. Mayor, concludes my report.
Mr. Eric Taylor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to take this opportunity to remind the public that work on Concord Road is getting ramped up. And as a result, folks who are driving through that area may observe and experience different, different conditions depending on what the progress of the work crew is for that particular day. But generally speaking, there will be intermittent lane closures from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM Monday through Friday, with at least one lane remaining open in each direction. And the two lanes of traffic will be open in each direction for both the morning and afternoon rush hours. So the contractor's work is scheduled to be built in three phases with Evelyn Street, King Springs Road, and Atlanta Road demarking the end of each phase. As updates are available, we will be sure to post them on the City of Smyrna's website and also through our social media channels.
Mr. Scott Cochran. Ms. Terry Graham, anything? No show calls here. We got three people signing up for citizen's input. Mary Kirkland Doyle at 1078 Oakview Drive. Nothing important is her topic.
Hey, you guys. Smyrna taxpayers should expect honest, transparent government, not the misinformation and propaganda that we are getting. Last month, Mayor, you were quoted in the Neighborhood Creative Loafing, saying that the reason people are moving to Smyrna is for the schools. That could be true if you're talking about coming, people coming from lower-performing school districts and third-world districts and third-world countries. But I believe you were trying to present a false perception of the schools to sway the public opinion. The school rankings show the unfortunate reality Smyrna is faced with. Of the 1,161 elementaries in Georgia, Swanee has five in the top 25 and Cummings has four in the top 25. To find Smyrna schools, you must scroll down to 170 for King Springs, followed by Teasley at 369 Brown 400, Belmont 700, and Argyle 790. These are unacceptable low rankings and are a very big reason why quality businesses and companies, as well as affluent, high-income families, aren't locating to Smyrna. Mordeus Honesty surrounds a food truck success. The main reason it's so popular is there is a void of restaurants and entertainment venues in Smyrna. And it's also a shame to see the overkill attention given to Bronner Park and the City Hall government areas while so many areas of Smyrna lie in disrepair and neglect, including the Cumberland Road, the Cumberland Boulevard Spring Road neighborhoods, Davenport Rose Garden Hills, and the South Cobb and Wendy Hill neighborhoods and corridors. But I'm here to question Smyrna's secretive meetings. Smyrna's work sessions are called the Committee of the Whole Meetings. They are held every second and fourth Monday at 5:30 PM. Unfortunately, they are held upstairs behind a locked door. By law, the public can attend if they can find it and figure out how to ring the doorbell and be allowed in. But once they get in, they must sit. There's no citizen input allowed. There's no agenda posted on the city website alerting the public of these meetings. And the New Granicus page on the city website has a section dedicated to archiving and meeting information. There's a column for, to list meetings, location, time, agendas, minutes, attachments, and videos. The council and zoning meetings are properly posted. The columns for the Committee of the Whole Meetings are left mysteriously blank. These are the meetings where all the people's business is discussed, including updates on vacant lots and how our tax money is being spent. These meetings need to be moved to the downstairs conference room. Citizens should be encouraged to attend and citizens' input should be allowed. The agenda needs to be posted on the city website before the meeting, along with all the meetings' minutes and attachments after the meetings. By comparison, economically strong cities such as Woodstock, Decatur, Dunwoody, Roswell, Swanee, Norcross, Duluth, and Alpharetta, every one of those have their work sessions online for public viewing and include public input and participation. Look it up. If they can do it, we deserve it here. There seems to be a direct correlation between cities that include public participation in everyday business and cities that enjoy prosperity and influence. It's a dark city here. It's closed. It's private. It needs to change. And maybe we'll see some prosperity in Smyrna. But right now, we are struggling and it's a shame the condition Smyrna's in. Y'all can pretend like it's not, but it is.
Alec Bakri, 3459 Choney Trail, comment as this topic.
My first comment tonight is for the city attorney, Mr. Cochran, who I asked in the last council meeting to look into Kroy Engineering, who does multimillion-dollar projects for the city, and the council person that works for him on, which brought up the issue of conflict of interest. I haven't received a letter or a call at home. I'd like to know if he has any comments tonight on that issue. Mr. Cochran.
This is not a question and answer period.
No comment? Well, if I don't hear by tomorrow, I've already contacted the state. They totally concur with me on the conflict of interest issue, and I will pursue that at the state level, and we can go from there. Secondly, since I talk about Kroy, for some of these council people that may not know it, in '12, the city paid $203,754 in land acquisition fees to Kroy Engineering. As I brought up at the last meeting, Kroy, well, excuse me, the city has departments. It doesn't happen every day. And that they come up with people in the city on payroll that could go over and do this, then bring in a third party and waste, to me, 200, over $200,000. That money could have gone towards a leaf program. So I don't understand why you bring in a third party, which is an engineering company, when we have very efficient departments here with people to go out and, when you have a question on a land acquisition, let the city have a department do it where someone's making 45, 50,000. Once in a while, go out whenever that comes up and do it. But Kroy Engineering, to me, this is a waste of city money of over $200,000. And since I requested, which is rare from the city attorney, a clarity on this issue of conflict of interest, that's part of his job description, since I am one of many that chip in to pay the salary of these people in front of me, that I should at least have the respect to have the clarity on a question when it comes up once in a while. That's what we pay you for, and that's in your job description. Anything less is unacceptable. Thank you.
Larissa Edwards, 304 Hickory, I guess it's Hickory Acres, I guess. Topic is perm change.
Good evening, city council members and Smyrna city residents. My name is Larissa Edwards. I am the Messiah. I am here to prove it. Last time I was here, I offered the city, the residents of Smyrna, free lessons on how to slow the aging process. I'd like everyone in here to know and on the internet that I have not received any communication from city leaders. I find this quite odd because everyone knows that a significant percentage of Smyrna's population is comprised of aged individuals. Personally, if I knew that my city leaders had an opportunity to afford me a little bit more time, arguably a very valuable commodity, and they didn't respond, I'd be very perturbed. Fortunately, time recognition is not, is the least of your worries right now. You're not alone. Over 96% of God's population is embedded with satanic programming. So you're not alone. What does this mean? Okay? This means that you are witnessing the first hostile takeover of its kind ever. Starting with the city of Smyrna, I, Larissa Edwards, challenge the entire United States government for the position of flock leadership. This challenge goes out to Democrat, Republican, Christian, Jew, Muslim, Scientologists, NASA, Harvard, Yale. Divine order takes on all challengers. To the enemies of the United States, I do understand how you feel. We, you know, we all know that Satan, you know, the United States is considered to be Satan's wench, you know? Tell us something that I don't know. The problem is you cannot harm innocent people. If you're willing to harm innocent people, you are just as satanic as your enemy. Please believe me. I need everybody to know there is only one way to God's future, and in order to get to God's future, you have to get time. In order to get time, you have to go through God. And in order to get to God, you have to go through me. So what are your options? Your options are to accept peace, okay, and commit to being peaceful leaders, okay? You can refuse it, which is your right, and you can defend your positions as city leaders publicly. If you win and I lose, I'll never come here again. You can take 49% of the proceeds, if there are any proceeds to take, and I'll move out of Smyrna, you'll never see me again. But if I win, you agree to be peacemakers and together we'll usher in divine order. Any questions? From anybody?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Maybe this time you'll call.
Any other business to be brought for this body? I declare this meeting adjourned at 8:37.